Welcome to the December 16th zoning meeting. We will, I will call this meeting to order and we will start with introductions. And let's start with our clerk.
Julie Toms, Deputy City Clerk.
Tiwana Brown, City Council District 3.
Good evening, Renee Johnson, and I'm honored to represent District 4.
Good evening, everyone. James Mitchell, City Council at Large.
Liz Babson, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. Dante Anderson, Mayor Pro Tem, District 1.
Malcolm Graham, District 2.
Ed Driggs, District 7.
Tarek Carter, District 6.
LaWanna Mayfield, Council Member at Large.
Good evening, Victoria Wallington, Councilmember at Large.
Terri Hagler Gray, Senior Assistant City Attorney.
Ms. Molina, would you like to introduce yourself?
Good evening, everyone. Marjorie Molina, I represent District 5.
Excellent. So, we will begin our meeting with an invocation, an expression and inspiration, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation by a council member is intended to solidify our proceedings. And we celebrate the religious diversity of our entire community, including those who do not have a religious faith. And this evening, Councilmember Brown will lead us. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight or this evening. And so it is an absolute pleasure to be able to bring the invocation tonight. So I'm a dedicated member to Great Mount Sinai Baptist Church, 1243 West Boulevard, under the direction of Dr. Major Stewart. My entire family go there. I've been there my entire life. I just want to say tonight, my pastor spoke about something very, very deep on Sunday. But I just want people to know that the world needs more love, no matter what you're going through, how you're going through it, what amount of money you have in your bank account. The world needs more love. You know, before I was preparing to come here, I was dealing with a family emergency. But I also turned on TV. I'm a current events person. I like to see what's going on in the world. And there was another shooting in Wisconsin. And it was ju-, it was a juvenile. Didn't get out, didn't get the age. But juvenile tells me under the age of 17, 17 and below. And so there were six injured and two pronounced dead, including the shooter. And so this is supposed to be the most wonderful time of the year. But maybe it's not the most wonderful time of the year for others. We all have our agendas. We all have our goals. We all have things that we want to get done and accomplish in life. When you're thinking about what you're gonna do, remember that we all have to exit this world. We all leaving here. And whether you believe it or not, or whether your religion, your faith, or your faith base, or what your religion is, or what your practice, we all have an exit date. We don't know that date. I'll leave you with this. When you look at that image in the mirror, we all have something that we can improve. We all have something that we can work on. And just remember that me, you, or anybody else that's listened to me under the sound of my voice, we're no better than anybody, but we're just as good as everybody. The world needs more love. Councilmember Brown, Tiwana, District 3. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would like to, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we will begin, in just a minute, with an explanation of our zoning process. But before I do that, I just wanted to acknowledge someone who has been a part of this community for years. Some of you have gotten to a point in your life where you've been able to retire. And you've been able to move on and enjoy the balance of your life. And Mr. Keith McVane has been working with us for many, many years. And he's decided to go and do just that in 2025. And so I'm going to read Keith a letter from the mayor, Mayor Lyles, that is directed to you. And it reads as follows. Dear Keith, as Mayor of Charlotte, I want to take the opportunity to congratulate you on your retirement after a total of 40 years of tireless work to enhance the lives of Charlotte residents. You began your career with the city of Charlotte and dedicated 24 years of exemplary service, working in several leadership positions within the city planning department, helping to shape for, helping to shape for good the growth and the development of our community by promoting a balance of sound planning initiatives with a proper regard for jobs and opportunities for Charlotte citizens. During your tenure with the city, you developed a reputation for thoughtfulness, patience, management skillfulness, and a remarkable memory for the many details associated with rezonings and land use cases. Seeking new challenges, you continued this commitment to excellence in the area, in the area of planning and development with an additional 16 years of service in the private sector as a land use consultant, where you displayed the same tireless and patient work ethic, culminating now in a total of 40 years of tireless work to enhance the lives of Charlotte residents. During your 40-year career, you have been recognized not only for your professional accomplishments, but also for your kindness and your warmth. The low-key determination and genuine, good nature, leaving a positive impression on colleagues, clients, and community members alike. Congratulations, Keith, on a career that supported the creation of housing initiatives, advancement of community benefits, the promotion of economic development initiatives that have left a lasting, a lasting mark on the city of Charlotte and the entire region. On behalf of the city, we are grateful to you for your many years of commendable service to the Charlotte region, and we genuinely wish you the best for a long and happy retirement. Yours truly, signed by Alexander Lyles. Please join in the congratulations.
Hey Keith, do the walk.
That's right. Yeah, do the walk.
My friend.
Thank you, man.
Hey, I'm right behind you.
No, Liz, no.
She's like, I'm leaving. No, let's, I'm right behind you.
Amazing.
Wish I hadn't ignored your call so much now. Sorry.
Excellent. Thank you, Keith, for your commitment to the city of Charlotte. Okay, so now we will begin the explanation of our zoning process. And the process begins with applications submitted to the planning staff for review. And there are two types of cases on the agenda. We have decisions and we have hearings. The decisions on cases for which a public hearing has been previously held, and so there's no opportunity for further public comment. The hearings, for any hearing. And the staff will do a presentation on hearings which, which have no time limit at all. And the petitioner, who's in favor, gets three minutes combined to present the case, unless there are two opportunities that occur. One is that there's opposition to speak. Or if staff is in opposition, the petitioner will get 10 minutes. The opponent will get 10 minutes combined. And then a petitioner will get two minutes for a rebuttal. If no one is opposed or, or signed to speak, then staff will provide a short presentation. And the public hearing will be closed and we'll move on to the next one. The petition goes to our zoning committee of Planning Commission for Review and Recommendation. And on that note, I'm going to hand it over to Chair Blumenthal, so he can introduce his committee.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem. Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Blumenthal. I'm the chairman of the zoning committee of the Planning Commission. Allow me to introduce my fellow committee members. I think there's at least one still in the back, but everyone's here this evening. We have, starting right next to me, Theresa McDonald, Aaron Shaw, Rick Winnaker, Shawna Neely, Robin Stewart, and then Clayton Sealy will be joining, joining us momentarily. The zoning committee will next meet on Tuesday, January 7th. Please note that was pushed back a week so that we were not meeting on New Year's Eve at 5:30 PM. At that meeting, the zoning committee will discuss and make recommendations on the petitions that have public hearings this evening. The public is welcome to attend that meeting. However, please note that it is not a continuation of these public hearings. Prior to that, you are welcome to contact any of us to provide input. All of our contact information and the information on each petition is on the city's website at charlottplanning.org. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And with that, we will begin with the petitions that have had some deferrals and withdrawals. And I will hand it over to you, Mr. Putton, to speak to those.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We've got several decisions and several hearings that have requested a deferral. First item is item number eight, Petition 2024-121 by the Charlotte Planning, Design, and Development Department. And then item 15, 2024-083, also by the city of Charlotte. That is a rezoning request for properties on Parkwood Ave and Pagram Street. Both of those are requesting a deferral to our January 21st, 2025 meeting for a decision. And then we have four public hearings requesting a deferral to January 21st, 2025 as well. And those are items 17, 2024-109 by Charlotte Planning, Design, and Development on behalf of Mary Dominic. Item 18, 2024-111 by the Presbyterian Home at Charlotte, Inc. Item 25, 2024-102 by Drakeford Communities. And then item 29, 2024-112 by Dream Key Partners. Again, all hearings, all items, both decision and hearing are requesting that deferral to January 21st of next year.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to defer the two, the two decisions and the four hearings as Mr. Putton has?
Second.
All right. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. We'll move on to the consent agenda items. And the rezoning petition items three through seven may be considered in one motion, except for those items that are pulled by a council member. Please note for these petitions, the following criteria has been successfully made. There has been no public opposition for these petitions at the hearing. The zoning committee recommended approval, and there are no changes after the zoning committee's recommendation, as well as staff recommends the approval as well. I will read the, the five consent agenda items. But is there any consent agenda items that council would like to pull for question, comment, or separate vote? Ms. Mayfield.
Yes, I would like four and five for a separate vote.
Four and five. Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve the following petitions and to adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency for each of these petitions as they appear in our agenda as a council's own? And I'll read them individually. Petition number 2024-002, petition number 2024-097, and petition number 2024-100.
Richard adopted and approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor to approve the consent items, please raise hands. Any opposed? All right, that is unanimous. Okay, is there a motion to, to approve and adopt a zoning committee's statement of consistency for petition number 2024-051, as it appears on our agenda?
So move.
Second.
Of a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Ms. Mayfield.
Thank you. So for staff, we had a discussion earlier, but I want clarification. This particular request is a petition proposing to allow either 144 multifamily residential dwelling units or 144 hotel rooms within the existing buildings on the site. So I wanted to get clarity on if we were to rezone this to the innovation mixed use conditional, you cannot have both. So they can't have a hotel that's also using, having space identified for rental. So exactly why this particular language versus identifying either or, hotel or multifamily?
Yeah, certainly. So you are correct. They can't have both at the same time. So it, once it starts to conversion to multifamily, that's the direction it needs to go in. But the language is there in the sense to make sure that they don't create a nonconformity through the rezoning and allow the hotel to still operate while they get through the process of... process of starting the transition to multifamily, if they choose to do that. So it just makes sure that they can make any needed improvements, do anything that they need to do while it's still a hotel before they start that transition. They won't run into any challenges as a nonconforming use.
So under mixed-use, innovative mixed-use conditional, if they do choose to go to multifamily versus hotel, they would still be then consistent moving forward under our UDO policy? They would not need to come back before council?
Yeah, correct. So if it operated, let's say they converted to a multifamily use, you know, sometime next year, and that operated for ten, fifteen years, if they decided that wasn't the direction they wanted to continue to go in, they could convert back to a hotel. But again, they can't have both going on at the same time, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any additional comment? Hearing none. All in favor to adopt and approve petition number 2024-051? Please raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Is there a motion to approve petition number 2024-095 and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it states in our agenda?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Mayfield?
In a moment, my system is moving slow. So I wanted to understand, this is a very narrow strip, it's about six point five eight acres, and this is over heading towards Whitewater. And I want to ensure, I believe my understanding is that this can be up to thirty units that can be on this particular development, but we had some language in here earlier that gave the numbers as far as the potential traffic impact, and that being two hundred and twenty trips per day based on nineteen dwelling units. So if they were to go up to the thirty, do we know what those potential trips would be? And also, do we have a traffic light or something that's going to help transition once residential is built over here?
I can't answer the traffic light question. I'll defer that to our colleagues at CDOT. I will say for the amount of total units, there can be thirty buildings on the site. Those buildings could contain anywhere from a single-family dwelling to a triplex, so it could be anywhere from thirty units to ninety units, so that's hard to gauge, you know, what the actual outcome will be, given that it's a conventional petition and they've got to still go through land development. They will analyze traffic and trips. Once they get a plan in and they understand how many units there are, they would then do their calculations and determine if there's any mitigation that's needed. But if CDOT has anything to add, I'll certainly turn it over to them just to make any clarifications.
Jay Carpenter at CDOT. So for the estimates of trip generation at this stage, we don't, just because of what Dave mentioned, is there can be, you know, somewhere, some mix of units or a number of buildings, but it would, based on the size of the parcel, it would not be significantly higher than the two hundred and twenty that was estimated for entitled, maybe, you know, three hundred in that range, but we don't have estimates for that without a site plan to analyze. As far as the improvements, we would analyze those in permitting. For this size of development, we wouldn't anticipate any external improvements, traffic signals, things like that. But at this point in the process, we haven't looked at the network as it's a conventional rezoning. We don't have a site plan to analyze and estimate.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayfield. Any additional questions? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise hands. Any opposed? One is opposed, Ms. Mayfield. Thank you. That concludes our consent agenda, and we will move forward with our non-consent decisions. And we will begin with agenda item number nine. And Mr. Petten, I believe there were some changes to agenda item number nine after the zoning committee.
That's correct, yes. So this petition by Horizon Development did make one change after zoning committee. They've shown the proposed route of an eight-foot pedestrian connection between the site and the budding site to the south, which is petition 2023-039, which we'll hear in a couple of items. So they just clarified where that connection from the pedestrian standpoint would be, going to that project just to the south by Northwood Raven. So minor change from staff's opinion does not warrant additional review by the zoning committee, and happy to take any questions.
Move to not send back.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to not send back and second. All in favor to not send back, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. All right, is there a motion to approve petition number 2023-023 by Horizon Development Properties and adopt the zoning committee's statement as our own, as it states in our agenda?
Move to adopt and approve.
Second.
All right. Any comment? Mr. Bakari?
Thank you. And I'll just generically have comments that I think will apply a lot to the next three rezonings you'll see, as all of us are familiar with. This has been going on for a while, and these three are very much part of a more macro view and approach that's happening in my district. I would start by saying that despite the fact that this has been going on for close to two years, for the size and magnitude of this, I am pleasantly surprised how little divisive kind of community uprising is against something of this magnitude. We all know, no matter how great something is, if it's big and it's happening in someone's backyard, that's a cause for concern in a lot of cases. And I think that's a testament to the three combined development teams and the petitioners who have spent the better part of two years working closely, collaborating with neighbors. Not everyone's items are always going to be able to make it in, but I will say that this is one of the better efforts that I've seen to really listen, to communicate, to stay up to date with all the neighborhoods and what's happened there. These combined three rezonings are close to one hundred and fifteen acres, and it's a unique opportunity to revitalize an area that was developed over sixty years ago with new residential uses and mixed-use neighborhood centers. It's going to replace, in most cases, deteriorated older buildings and really enhance active open space around that. It's really importantly going to be not just a major catalyst for that side of town, it's going to be, you know, something that is going to increase our housing stock overall, something that's really important, as we know, for a city growing at the clip we are, but also their focus to the affordable housing, the park dedication, all of those things are really important. And then just final macro statement across all three, you know, this has been a substantial workload around the detailed transportation study that occurred, working with CDOT and NC DOT, over twenty-two area intersections, access management improvements. This Providence Road corridor is a problem. It has been a problem for a long time, and we have just been in a spot of inability to address it. So while the problem isn't going to go away overnight, and while this will add more trips to that, this is the first, in my seven years being here, substantial amount of public and private investment into that corridor, so the ball can get rolling down the road towards all of this. And I think this is something that hopefully we can build upon, but I just need to applaud everyone, particularly the neighbors who stayed engaged, stayed so positive through this process for something of this magnitude that is not normally seen. So I will move forward with any other comments there, and then we can go to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Bakari. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes. Counsel in the right of XSA Horizon Development Properties, but I just want you all to know this is a development by Levine. So I'd like to thank Levine for your passion toward affordable housing, and I know we have the CEO, full to meet him here this evening. Thank you, sir, and we appreciate your commitment to affordable housing in our community.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Hearing none. All in favor to approve and adopt agenda item number nine, as it states in our agenda? Raise hands. Any opposed? Ms. Mayfield is in opposition. Okay, we will move on to agenda item number ten. And again, Mr. Petten, there are some changes.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This petition also had changes after zoning committee. This will be a recurring theme. We have quite a few of our decisions that have to deal with these. So this petition did make some changes. Petition reduced the maximum height for single-family attached dwellings to forty-eight feet in any of the development areas, clarified that single-family detached units are not proposed on the site, eliminated transfer rights for single-family detached units from development area A to E. And again, staff believes these changes are minor, provided clarification and do not warrant any additional review by the zoning committee. We'll take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Move to not send back.
Second.
There's a motion not to send back and a second. All in favor to not send back, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. So is there a motion to approve and adopt petition number 2023-038 by Levine Properties as the zoning committee's statement of consistency, as it appears in our agenda?
Move to adopt and approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment? Mr. Bakari?
Yeah, the same macro comments apply to all three of these, but specifically for this one, this is a major revitalization of over eighty-five acres to replace sixty-year-old deteriorated buildings from a road improvement perspective, as I've already mentioned, specifically, though, new and improvements along Providence Road, Sardis Lane, old Providence Road intersections, improved connectivity from Providence Road to Sardis Lane, Providence Road access management improvements, including new traffic signals, consolidation of accesses, and aside from the generous buffers, the sidewalks, and all of the great public open spaces that are going to incur with this project, it includes one hundred and eight workforce housing units and no auto-oriented uses or out parcels, and this is without dipping into our housing trust fund. So this is substantial in what's happening in this one, and I would encourage my colleagues to support.
Thank you, Mr. Bakari. Any additional comments? Mr. Driggs?
I just wanted to know quickly, for one, we should appreciate the willingness of the petitioner to make this very large investment in Charlotte. It's beneficial to us, and I say that particularly because there are hundreds of millions of dollars involved here, and a great portion of that is going to go to hire people, many of them low-income people, so the jobs alone from this are a major benefit. And personally, having seen a number of large-scale developments in my district, I think it's a great way to improve the city versus kind of piecemeal development. So I look forward to supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Driggs. You know, I was on an active construction site the other day, and they said that their height, over seven hundred employees, are working on those sites.
It's a big deal.
So it is a big deal from a hiring perspective. Any additional comments? Hearing none. Is there, we have a motion and a second to adopt and approve. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. We will move on to agenda item number eleven, and again, Mr. Petten, I'll hand it over to you.
Great, thank you. Twenty-two-three-zero-three-nine by Northwood Raven, again, made a few changes after zoning committee. They had specified the maximum number and type of dwelling units for each of the four development areas, A through D. There's an additional change that came shortly just before the meeting, late this afternoon, that's not captured on this slide, but they did reduce the overall building height throughout the project to eighty feet. And again, staff believes the changes are minor and do not warrant additional review by the zoning committee. Move to not send back.
Second.
All right, there's a motion to not send back and a second. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Is there a motion to adopt and approve petition number twenty-two-three-zero-three-nine by Northwood Raven?
Move to adopt and approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Mr. Bakari?
Just a couple other additional comments here. Some of those benefits, relocation of old Providence Road access points to align with the existing street network, elimination of second access point to Providence Road, landscape buffers and wall commitments along the southern property line adjacent to the River Oaks neighborhood, proposed dedication of land for public park fronting Providence Road. So these may seem like small things, but when you aggregate them across all three of the petitions we've just seen, and you see the size and magnitude of what's happening, I'll just end my comments by saying it's not often we get an opportunity to do something of this scale and magnitude impacting all the topics I mentioned in the beginning. And to the neighbors, I know this brings frustration and concern sometimes. You guys have worked for the better part of two years, and by and large, I can say that I have never seen something this large go so well and be such a connection from the developer to the community. So I'm just grateful for all of you developers, all you communities, members that have worked there. It's certainly weighing the pros and cons of everything that's new and develops and builds in our own backyards, but I think everyone did a really great job coming to consensus, and as you see with what we didn't send back, making concessions even today and over the weekend for what neighbors were looking for. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Driggs.
I just wanted to recognize the work that Mr. Bakari has done on all of our behalf to get us to this outcome. I know from a couple of experiences of my own what it's like, and I think you've done a great job. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Driggs. I too want to echo the sentiment for Mr. Bakari's work on this. This corridor has not been touched in quite some time, and the result of this combination of rezoning will really illuminate this area and bring it up to date, Mr. Bakari. So I appreciate the work that you've done to ensure that there will be positive impact along this corridor. Any additional comments? Hearing none. All in favor to adopt and approve, raise hands. Any opposed? Ms. Mayfield is in opposition. Thank you. We will move on to agenda item number twelve. And Mr. Petten, once again, it's over to you.
Thank you. Yes, twenty-two-four-zero-five-nine, again, with some changes after zoning committee. Behecular access to Timber Lane was removed. That was just for a modified access, but that's been removed now. Access is now being provided off of Sardis Road, which is through a full movement access. They did provide the tree survey that was requested after the zoning committee and showed the drip line of heritage trees using that survey, and then also removed a conditional note regarding the elimination of buffer requirement upon rezoning or redevelopment of the adjacent site, so any buffers would be maintained regardless of any redevelopment that would occur adjacent to the project. Staff believes the changes are minor, do not warrant additional review by the zoning committee, and will be happy to take any questions.
Move to not send back.
Second.
There's a motion to not send back and a second. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Okay, is there a motion to approve petition number twenty-two-four-zero-five-nine and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it appears in our agenda?
Move to adopt and approve.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Mr. Bakari?
This will conclude the District Six portion of our evening.
It's been working.
Everything just came together at this moment. I will comment on this one to say the opposite of what I said for the last three, which is I've never seen something that is so small be so contentious for such a long time with so much friction. I, this is a unique one because we had a lot of neighbors, rightly so, upset by a number of factors here, but with limited ability to do anything about it because of the potential by right of opportunity of this owner and petitioner to do something otherwise that the UDO allowed now versus before. So this was definitely one of the more unique ones, and in fact, probably took up almost as much time as the last three in my last year. But I am happy to relay, I thought this was one that we were just, I was going to have to take a no position on. Through the creativity of planning and CDOT, the neighbors continuing in good faith to work, and the petitioner coming together, we actually were able to figure out how to thread the needle here and make sure, most importantly, to our neighbors in the Timber area, Mammoth Oaks area, that there wasn't a large amount of trips coming down a road that was not equipped to handle that, both in the neighborhood, both from, you know, fire and trash pickup and a lot of other reasons. So we figured that out. I appreciate everyone's work, because this one seemed like there was no solution, but at the last minute, we were able to come to an agreement that the neighbors came together and voiced their support, the petitioner was willing to do, staff and CDOT was willing to allow it. So I would appreciate if you would join me in supporting this tonight, or if not, just annex all of this stuff into your districts and you could deal with it on the next go round.
Any additional comment?
How can you follow that?
Well, you know. Hearing none. All in favor, please raise hands. Any opposed? Ms. Mayfield, will you oppose? That was quick, I couldn't see it.
She was reluctantly supportive.
Oh, reluctantly.
Extremely reluctantly.
Extremely reluctantly.
Okay, wonderful. That is unanimous. Okay, we will move on to agenda item number thirteen, and Mr. Petten, I'll hand it over to you.
All right, great, thank you. Twenty-two-four-oh-seven-seven by the Drucks Group. Again, had one change after zoning committee. They revised the site plan to comply with the green area requirements of the UDO. Again, staff believes the change is minor, does not warrant additional review by the zoning committee.
Excellent. Is there a motion to not send back to zoning committee?
Some... Oh. Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? All right, that is unanimous. So is there a motion to approve petition number twenty-two-four-oh-seven-seven and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it appears in our agenda?
Some...
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Brown, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Okay. We... Item number fourteen and fifteen have been deferred.
Just fourteen.
Just fourteen?
Yeah, that's... I just was speaking with the clerk. I misread the item number. I had the petition number correct, twenty-two-four-oh-eight-three by City of Charlotte, but I read it as item fifteen. It is only item fourteen, so fifteen is on the agenda for decision. But we do have changes after for that one as well.
Yes, we do. So we're on agenda item number fifteen, and Mr. Petten, I'll hand it over to you.
All right, the changes portion of the meeting will continue, and that was twenty-two-four-oh-eight-nine. The changes they made after zoning committee was a landscape plan being added, which would depict the planning and location of trees along Hovis Road and internal to the site within some of the parking areas. There's also a note that came in shortly before the meeting as well that's not reflected on the slide, and that was that they will provide an updated note stating that no building shall be closer than fifteen feet from the property line of the adjacent homes along Pinoka. So there's some single families there along that road. We did hear some feedback on that this afternoon from Councilmember Mayfield, and we did work with the petitioner to get those buildings moved off a little bit. So again, no building will be closer than fifteen feet from those property lines. They will provide a buffer as well within that fifteen feet. Staff believe those changes are minor and would not warrant additional review by the zoning committee.
Move not to return, Mayor.
Second.
All right, there's a motion to not send back and a second. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Is there a motion to approve petition item twenty-two-four-oh-eight-nine and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it appears in our agenda?
Move approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you. I would like to take a moment to thank the petitioners for accommodating that additional fifteen feet for the current residents that live in the area and appreciate their willingness to adjust that, as well as the additional amendments that they made right before our meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional comment? Hearing none. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. And we will move on to the final decision item...
Bring us home, D4.
...of the evening. Agenda item number sixteen. Is there a motion to approve petition number twenty-two-four-one-zero-one and adopt the zoning committee's statement of consistency as it appears in our agenda?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So if you'll recall last month when this went to... Or this came before us for hearing, I was somewhat concerned, along with some other council members, because of the density of the development. This is near the boardwalk, which is the Mecca of District Four, so I think we have to be very conscientious in its highest and best use. I've had the pleasure to speak with the developer, and that developer has been truly committed to this area. Thus far, they've contributed six point six million dollars in site work for new utilities and a new twelve-foot multi-use path. There's a donation of over four hundred and sixty thousand along JW Clay in the cash value for improvements in infrastructure and traffic. There's an investment of twelve point six million for the renovation of the shopping center across the street. They led the financing and construction of our beautiful new library in the district in the university area that's going to be opening early next year. This petition and development also strengthens the customer base. It's going to strengthen the retail in that area. So that's very important as we're growing, to take this balanced approach from a commercial and residential perspective. They have university-city partner support, and if you're familiar with the novel university area, those are very high-quality units, and they've committed to that level of quality. So I'm honored to support this petition. I trust the commitment and the quality that's going to be invested in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any additional comments? Ms. Mayfield?
Thank you. So I think I'm pretty consistent where I have a concern with the number of multifamily that we have, and full transparency, along with others, I was going to be a note tonight for the fact of this request for this increase, but I will take into consideration, and I appreciate the district having the conversation and identifying more opportunities for the community for this much larger plan for the development. But I do think as a council, we really need to have a conversation regarding what is happening with Charlotte water, the conversations that we're having with access to water as we continue to approve these large-scale multifamily developments.
Thank you, Ms. Mayfield. Ms. Brown?
So I wanted to say too, Councilmember Johnson, I definitely will be supporting you because I know the amount of work that you put into doing your work, kind of like myself. And so I look forward to supporting you because it's hard work, it's not easy, and there's always going to be some opposition depending on what you're talking about specifically, but I know that your homework and your research and your outreach is transparent and is authentic. So I look forward to supporting you on this.
Thank you. Okay. Any additional comment? Hearing none. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. And that will conclude the decision portion of our meeting, and we will move forward with the hearings. Where's the... Before we move forward with our hearings, we're actually going to take an action as a council, and the mayor's going to join us, so...
Okay. That's in the break-up right here, right now?
Yes, yes. So just bear with us for a minute or two.
Here, right?
Yes, here.
And we will start back with item number...
We will start with item number nineteen.
Yes.
This next section is an opposite of the Keith McVane one, where we are asking Colin Brown to actually retire.
Keith, I think you're doing a great job in retirement already.
The mayor wrote a letter. I will read it. Dear Mr. Brown.
It's good to hear laughter in this group. It's not often that we get a chance to have it, and I really appreciate it. It must be something about the season, or it might be Mr. Bakari who does it for us. I wanted to have an opportunity to address that the Charlotte City Council met today to discuss the appointment of an interim city attorney for the city of Charlotte. And we have reached a discussion around this, and so may I have a motion to nominate the interim superintendent, interim attorney as our city attorney for the next six months? Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we select Anthony Fox as our interim city attorney.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Now I'll open for discussion. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. All opposed? Please raise your hand. Three. So that motion passes. The new city attorney will be coming in effective January the first. We look at him as he will have a contract for six months, and we will be beginning the search and have already begun to look for a permanent person to do this job for us as well as for the citizens of this community. And so thank you very much for everyone. We will now move on to the next zoning item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And we will now proceed with the hearing portion of our meeting, and we will begin with item number nineteen. Rezoning petition twenty-two-four-oh-four-seven by Heaven Properties, located approximately twelve point seven seven acres, located on the north side of Harris Houston Road, east of Kempford Road, and west of Astoria Drive in District Four, Ms. Johnson's district. The current zoning is N-1A. Proposed zoning is N-1D-CD. Staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to site, building design, and environment. And after staff's presentation, Ms. Davana Smith and Rohit Patel will have ten minutes, and then we have opposition, Miss Sarah Uval, Joseph Lewis, and Lauren Spite will have ten minutes as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mayor Protem. Twenty-two-four-oh-four-seven, that's just under thirteen acres off Harris Houston Road. The existing zoning is N-1A, and as mentioned, the proposed zoning is for N-1D conditional. The adopted place type in this area is Neighborhood One, so the request is consistent with the adopted land use policies. The proposal is for up to seventy-six duplex units. They would be located in thirty-eight buildings. Those buildings would have a maximum building height of forty feet. They would install an internal network of public streets with on-street parking, also connect those to Harris Houston Road and Rygate Road. Excuse me, I thought there was an L, Rygate Road. Also installs a six-foot sidewalk and eight-foot planting strip along the frontage on Harris Houston. They are providing open space beyond the minimum requirements, fifteen point seven percent of common open space and sixteen point five percent green area. Again, those requirements are at least ten percent and fifteen percent respectively. They are providing a Class B thirty-foot buffer along Neighborhood One place types. So when they are, again, adjacent to those single-family neighborhoods, they are providing that Class B thirty-foot landscape yard. They are providing some design requirements for recesses of garage doors, and also are considering the incorporation of front porches against some of those private streets and public streets. Also notes that all corner and end units will have a porch or stoop that wraps around the building to provide a little bit more of a frontage, and identifies the existing pond that's on the site to be converted into a stormwater pond there. So again, staff does recommend approval of this petition. Do have some outstanding issues related to site and building design, transportation, and environment to work through. It is consistent with the twenty-forty policy map recommendation for Neighborhood One, and we'll be happy to take any questions following presentations by both the petitioner and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Davana Smith here and Rohit Patel? Yes. Can you come down to the podium, please? And because there's opposition, you will have ten minutes, and I will ask that Sarah Uval, Joseph Lewis, and Lauren Spite, are you present?
Yes.
Excellent. If you can just make your way over here as well so we can move... You can actually come down to this podium, to this podium here, so we can just move in an expeditious manner. And the two of you, you can step to that podium, and once you begin, you will have ten minutes in aggregate, okay? Thank you. Whenever you're ready.
Yes.
Thank you for giving this opportunity to present our project. We tried to make it seventy-six units that can be similar to that area with duplex building, as explained, like maximum forty-feet height. We are looking two-story duplexes, and we try to make it existing site, like not disturbing too much, keep the existing pond, and try to work around that pond. And I'm open to answer any questions they have. Thank you.
Hello, I am Davana Smith, the engineer working on this project, and I will take us through the slide presentation, if you could move to the next slide. So as mentioned, this is located right along Harris Houston. We are proposing a N-1D conditional zoning, specifically using the compact development that is part of the new UDO. Next slide, please. This is just a quick presentation of the site plan surrounding the area. There is a lot of single family, so we are looking to bring variety of housing units into this area. So the proposed layout is for duplex units, as previously discussed. Next slide, please. Some of the larger topics that were brought up from community members in the community meeting were regarding these following items: density, landscape buffer, and amenities. Next slide. Regarding the density, we, obviously, as I just expressed, we are proposing using the compact residential, which has been added into the new UDO. We originally were going for the Conservation District, but based on the changes that were recently made, that was not an option for us, so we have adjusted to use the compact residential, specifically to be able to make accommodations based off of the setbacks that are allowed in that zoning. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see that despite us using the compact development N-1D zoning, we are exceeding the actual minimum lot widths for this area, so it's not specifically using, you know, trying to squeeze in as many as we can. We are actually exceeding some of those minimum requirements. We are also, if you go to the next slide, exceeding the minimum buffer requirements. It was expressed that we are providing thirty-foot landscape yards. That is in excess of the required twenty-five-foot landscape yards, and that is also so that we are able to use that as common open space, counted toward common open space areas in some places. And then also, next slide, you'll see that a large part of the perimeter being shown of the property is actually undisturbed tree line. So some of the concerns that community members expressed was the buffering and what that would look like for the neighboring single-family properties. And you'll see that on the western property edge, majority of that property line is going to be undisturbed. It's behind that utility easement, and then about fifty percent of that eastern property edge is also going to be undisturbed. And moving on to the next slide. Another idea that was brought up was the concern about the amenities, just generally in this area. We are providing, as you can see in the next slide, central common open space that'll be in the middle of the development, and we are also providing pedestrian connectivity, not only to connect to the neighboring properties internal to the site, but also drawing that connection along Harris Houston Road based on the road improvements to meet the collector standard. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Did you... Are you done with your presentation? Excellent. So the three of you can step up to the mic. You'll have ten minutes in aggregate to express your concerns. I ask that you just announce, state your name before you begin speaking. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Obay. I lived in this area and that area for over twenty years, and my concern is traffic. It's been getting worse throughout, also because of the Pavilion, PNC Amphitheater, but with the new developments that have been popping up. So my concern is traffic. You're trying to build seventy-six units. That's around a hundred and fifty-two vehicles on a two-lane traffic that's Harris Houston Road. So I want to know what's going to be done for that. That's my concern.
Thank you.
My name is Joseph Lewis, and I'm representing the Houston Hills HOA, which this development is planned to connect to. I'm here to express my opposition to the proposal twenty-two-four-oh-four-seven. The proposal, which concerns the development of the new community, has raised numerous concerns among the residents of our neighborhood. First and foremost, I must highlight the lack of First and foremost, I must highlight the lack of communication from the developer. Despite multiple attempts to reach out and discuss implications of this proposal, we've received no response. This lack of engagement particularly is troubling, given the significant impact the development will have on our community in particular. It is also important to note that developers failed to fill their obligation to initiate a community meeting with Houston Hills HOA neighborhood. Meeting was only discovered by a contact in another community reaching out to our HOA. The new development will be directly connected to Houston Hills, yet there is a limited effort to engage with our community as required. Though the documents will note they attempted to communicate to our neighborhood and the address and contact information was used was for another community altogether. This lack of communication transparency is unacceptable and undermines the trust we have in the planning process. One of the most pressing issues is the anticipated increase in traffic, as previously mentioned. Previous traffic studies have shown that excessive speeding is persistent problem on Kempford Drive, which is set for twenty-five miles per hour. Average speeds are approaching forty miles per hour. Yet no measures have been accepted by the city DOT to install speed calming devices. The addition of a new community, which will connect and have access to Kempford, will only exacerbate this issue. Putting the safety of our residents at greater risk is also too important to note. There is a community playground that is owned by Houston Hills HOA on Kempford, which is directly impacted by this speeding of traffic. Additionally, speaking of traffic, the PNC Amphitheater and the increased traffic on Houston Hills following two recent developments, and the change of traffic flow from Harris Houston to Forty-Nine with a right turn only, there is often significant traffic backup on Harris Houston to Pavilion, impacting residents' ability to commute freely. Adding five hundred and twenty-nine more trips from this development will only further this. In attempting to work Charlotte DOT, decision remains no traffic light will be installed at that intersection. Furthermore, the new community lacks its own amenities. Though they do discuss that there are amenities, this is not typically what a community would consider amenity, just open play space. This will inevitably lead to increased utilization of the existing amenities in our community, which includes a playground and pavilion space. Our community amenities are already well-used, and the additional strain from new residents will diminish the availability and quality for our current residents, increasing our cost to maintain and operate them. Developer has not built any infrastructure into their plan to account for this community amenities. Another concern is the absence of planned community signage to clearly delineate the new development from our existing neighborhood. Again, referencing Rygate Road. Proper signage is crucial for maintaining the identity and cohesion of our communities, and the current proposal fails to address this need. This is also an issue with the planned structures. We are all for additional housing in the community. It is well-needed. However, this is all single-family homes in this area. The only exception is one out-parcel community, which was built, they are rental townhouses. That community does not connect to any other existing community. Lastly, I want to express my frustration with some of the council members and that we have tried to contact over this time, where we have also not received any reply. It does compound the issues that we're experiencing and the frustration our community continues to exhibit. Inclusion, this proposal represents numerous problems that have not been adequately addressed. The increase in traffic, the strain on community amenities, the lack of communication, and the absence of proper signage all contribute to my and the community's strong opposition to this proposal. I urge the council to reconsider and to work towards a solution that truly serves the best interest of all of our community members. Thank you.
Thank you. And you have a little over five minutes left.
Good evening, Lauren Spite. And I'm an adjoining property owner to the proposed development. So first of all, good evening. I'd like to say thank you to the city planning staff and Councilmember Johnson for their responsiveness to my inquiries during the review process. I am speaking against the project. However, I do observe the project has implemented some recommendations and requirements from city staff and from the community meeting that I believe will improve the experience for existing residents and new residents of the proposed community. Some of these improvements include the vegetated buffers between the existing and proposed developments, an amenity area in the new development, and a buffer along Harris Houston. I understand the proposed use and structures are anticipated and encouraged by the city's twenty forty plan. However, I am against development because I believe the city should better commit through funding to improve infrastructure to serve the new development if this type of development is encouraged through the adopted plans. I won't go over the traffic comments, I'll move ahead to other items. So with regarding the ten-minute neighborhood requirement of the twenty forty plan, amenities such as grocery stores, restaurants, gas stations, and pharmacies already exist in the area surrounding the proposed project. However, there are woefully inconsistent and insufficient pedestrian and bike facilities along Harris Houston and Pavilion. This project and the three to four most recent developments along Harris have been subject to regulations requiring the installation of sidewalk along Harris Houston. Previous developments were seemingly not required per the development requires at the time to install pet or bike facilities, leaving gaps in the current network. If dense developments are proposed, the city should allocate funds to capital improvement projects to complete pedestrian and bike facilities along Harris Houston and Pavilion. When considering rezoning petitions, there should be activated green space, either constructed or within relative walking proximity to the proposed project. There is no public park within a quarter mile, and the nearest section of greenway is not anticipated to be complete until the third quarter of twenty twenty-eight. Most specific to the planned layout is my comment about the amenity area, as previously mentioned. I believe that the details of that area are going to be evaluated during the construction plan review process. But to the extent possible, I would urge there is a condition that the amenity space is activated with specific requirements beyond that of a bench or a pergola, so that this is not just a leftover patch of grass for pet relief. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. You two will have a two-minute rebuttal if you'd like to use it.
First of all, I apologize for not getting back with you on the concerns. We had the neighborhood meeting, and amenities concern was brought up that time. But we were not sure how the planning gonna work out with the city. So we have plenty of space to do the amenities for our neighborhood. So hopefully, that will not impact their neighborhood. We have access from Harris Houston and the secondary access through that other neighborhood. So I'm not a traffic expert, but we try to give direct access to Harris Houston to avoid the challenge. And we have plenty of buffer around the existing houses to give the privacy. That was one of the concern, and we try to address that as well. And we try to work with the city to address other concerns and the neighbors to whatever concerns they had, how we can address those. But traffic is the one that I don't think we can have control over. Thank you.
Okay. I will open it up for comments or questions. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And thank you to the residents that took the time to come out this evening. And thank you, Dave, for being at the podium. We spoke about this earlier this week. I spoke to Dave and Allison. And one of the things I always talk about for the last several years is cumulative impact. And this is one of those petitions where the residents really feel the cumulative impact of what's going on in this area. If you look at the Charlotte Mecklenburg schools, Stony Creek remains at a hundred and four percent. And Julius Chambers High remains at a hundred and thirty-seven percent of capacity with this petition. But what we have to consider is the petitions that have been approved that are pending or recently approved. And on the, on page six in our zoning books, there are three, there are two other petitions, and that's the twenty twenty-one one eight-seven and twenty twenty-zero seven-four. So I would love to see the impact, or the cumulative impact, or the impact on schools as we consider those petitions along with this one. Harris Houston is a two-lane highway. That, those residents suffer from the concert traffic. You know, so we have to consider those. And so I've asked Dave if he has some information on infrastructure improvements in that area or traffic improvements in that area that are pending?
Yeah, we certainly can see if there's any, any projects pending. We can look into that. I did let C.D.O. know they do have to do a little bit of research to see if there's any other transportation projects. Like you said, we do have a project just south of this that may include some items just related to their own project. But we'd have to do a little bit of a deeper dive into it to see if there's any improvements on the books, and we can provide that to you in a follow-up.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, I mean, I've pressed for infrastructure discussion and balanced improvement and strategic improvement. And this is one of those, the petitions. And I understand from a petitioner perspective, you all see it from a, I guess, I don't want to say a siloed approach, but you're looking at your petition. But the residents, they feel the impact of this growth. So I'd like to take a look at this from a cumulative perspective and see what improvements can be made. Also, if there's another meeting that you all can have with the community so that they feel heard, I think that would be awesome. I can participate in the meeting. I believe your community meeting, I did have another commitment. But we certainly can have another meeting. And, yeah, I'd like to, Harris Houston, I mean, you all have been over there. It's a two-lane highway. It's kind of swirvy and just a lot of traffic. The, and the concerts, I talked to Dave, excuse me, Mr. Petten, and to our planning director, we have to do something. We can't just continue to develop and not, not respond. So I hope you understand. And I look forward to meeting with the community members. Thank you for coming out. Move to close?
Second.
All right, there's a motion to close public hearing. Second, all in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. We will move on to petition number twenty twenty-four zero eight-seven by Penmoth Holdings LLC. The location is approximately six point eight acres, located on the north side of Greer Road, the south side of Rocky River Road, and east of Lansing Bay Place and District Four, Ms. Johnson's district. The current zoning is N one A. Proposed zoning is N two A C D. Staff recommends approval of this petition. And after staff's presentation, may I ask, is Ms. Daisy Ramirez? Okay, wonderful. After staff's presentation, Nolan, Mr. Pennell, and Ms. Mingo will have ten minutes. And Ms. Ramirez, you will have ten minutes. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Twenty twenty-four zero eight-seven, six point eight acres on Greer Road and Rocky River, just a little bit west of Reedy Creek Nature Preserve. The property is currently zoned N one A. And the proposed zoning is for N two A conditional. The policy map does recommend Neighborhood One in this area, and it is across from a large area designated for parks and preserves. The site plan is for up to seventy multifamily attached dwelling units. They would provide a twelve-foot multi-use path and an eight-foot landscape strip along Rocky River Road and Greer Road. Also, an eight-foot sidewalk and eight-foot planting strip along the public road that would provide access to the site, that's Public Road One. Also commits to restripe Greer Road to provide a three-lane section along the site's frontage, as well as upgrades to the ramps at the corner of Greer Road and Rocky River to accommodate shared-use path upgrades, upgrades to the existing bus stop to an ADA compliant bus pad with bench. Would also limit height of buildings to forty-eight feet tall, as well as provide some architectural details for those residential units. Again, staff does recommend approval of this petition. We do not have any outstanding issues. And we will be happy to take any questions following.
Mayor Protem, members of City Council and the zoning committee, Nolan Gross with Urban Design Partners, representing Penmoth Holdings LLC on rezoning petition twenty twenty-four dash zero eight-seven. Dave, thank you for the thorough staff report. Go ahead and jump ahead. Here you can see our six point eight acre site, located at the corner at the intersection of Greer Road and Rocky River Road. The site is directly across from the Reedy Creek Park Community Garden. As Dave mentioned, the site is currently zoned Neighborhood One A. We are requesting to rezone to N two A conditional for up to seventy townhome dwelling units. The Charlotte Future twenty forty policy map does identify the site as Neighborhood One. However, there are policy implications that do support a Neighborhood Two zoning on-site. Here's our rezoning site plan. I'll jump ahead to our rendered version. Again, this is proposing up to seventy multifamily attached townhome dwelling units. Want to reiterate, these are for sale, townhome dwelling units, capped at two stories, each with a two-car garage and driveway parking space. There's also eighteen visitor spaces at the northeastern corner of the site. As Dave mentioned, there are a myriad of transportation improvements, be it at ADA, CATS, ADA bus stop on Rocky River Road, and a twelve-foot shared-use path surrounding the frontages of the site along Greer Road and Rocky River Road. As part of the twelve, the twelve-foot shared-use path expansion, we are also committed to off-site improvements. So we'll be extending the shared-use path west of the site along Greer Road, approximately four hundred and thirty linear feet, connecting to the adjacent development to ensure there's walkability and bikability across Greer to the intersection, where you could then cross to the south and access Reedy Creek Park. With that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have following any additional commentary or opposition.
Thank you. You do have seven minutes left. Either one of, Ms. Mingo would like to speak.
Antoinette Mingo, representing the Council District Four Community Coalition. And I'm speaking for this project for one reason, the four hundred and thirty-foot extension of sidewalk that originally there would have been a gap. So we appreciate that. We met with Mr. Pennell and staff on December fourth at our regular meeting. And we appreciate the fact that these will not be rental housing. And there will be something written in the C C N Rs to limit the number of homes that any one entity can own and rent. And also, a limit of twenty percent, twenty percent rental spaces, rental housing in that area. So I am just here to say that I'm for the project. It sounds like a good project. We all agree that it was a good project, as far as we're concerned. And so, that's all I have to say. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Mingo. Ms. Ramirez, you have ten minutes.
Hi. It won't be that long. I mean, my, our concern, I'm part of the HOA along with my friends here. Mostly, our concern is traffic. The area is very crowded, especially during rush hour. We have the school, we have the park, the intersection is always crowded. Also, the noise and privacy concerns. I've been living right across where they plan to go, to build, where the tree area is. I've been there for about eighteen years, never had any issues with anything. It feels like a community, like a neighborhood where I feel safe. With this, it's something that I don't, and I know my neighbors don't feel that safety will be as well as it is now because of, it's gonna be seventy houses, that's, I don't know. I mean, there's seventy more people, seventy more cars, just to say the least. That's another reason that we are opposed to it. Also, we're concerned about property values. They're gonna be building townhomes that maybe are not going to be with good material, like an actual single house will be. That might impact our homes. They, well, like I said, the loss of community feel that we have as of right now. As of right now, there's no, like, random people walking around the area. With something like this, I will feel unsafe. That somebody can just access through the woods and go through my backyard and just try to break into my home. That's probably, that's about it. Just, that's mostly our concerns for everyone that lives in that, inside of the neighborhood. And also, the lack of communications. Like, nobody received a letter, but just the five houses that are being impacted directly. And, you know, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. You all have a two-minute rebuttal if you would like to utilize it.
Thank you. So I'll start off with noise and privacy. You know, we're, our goal and the developer's goal is to be a good neighbor. Our tree save, the green area, is located at the western edge of the site, abutting the existing single-family home. So there's over a hundred feet of existing tree foliage that will remain. And there's over two hundred, there's approximately two hundred and fifty feet from the nearest townhome to the nearest single-family home in the abutting neighborhood. from the nearest townhome to the nearest single-family home in the abutting neighborhood. Property values, so these will be semi-custom townhomes. This is not a run-of-the-mill townhome community. Potential buyers will be able to come in, select higher-end finishes from the builder, at which point the units will be developed. And also, you know, our goal is to bolster the community and encourage walkability and connectivity, which is why we have committed to the off-site improvement of the shared-use path. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any comment? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you to both residents who came out, Ms. Ramirez, and also to Ms. Mingo. Thank you. Thank you for the work that you've done in leading the District Four Coalition. It seems, though, and I want to thank Paul Pennell also. I know he's worked closely with the Coalition. And that brings me back to Ms. Mingo. Thank you for maintaining the standards and raising the bar for development in District Four. I find, so thank you. The for-sale, limiting the number of rental in the area, the 12-foot multi-use path, the visitor parking, the walkability, the sidewalk, those are great, great concessions. I would, if you're able to, if you can meet with Ms. Ramirez again, Mr. Pennell, I know you've met with her or talked to her. And also, for city staff, if there were only five homes that were notified, yeah, if we can find out why, if that was because they're rentals. I know we've talked as a council, we've spoken as a council, how are we going to improve our communication? But this is another example, so let's make sure we address that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. But as far as privacy, there's a tree buffer and the distance between the units. I don't know if a fence was considered. I think that there was. If there's anything that we can do for that adjoining neighborhood, I'm happy to help you work with the developer for this petition. Thank you. Move to close?
Thank you. I have Ms. Mayfield, and then we'll motion to close. And then Ms. Brown. Ms. Mayfield, and then Ms. Brown.
Thank you. For the petitioner, I do appreciate the district representative asking you to reach back out because it is concerning to know that our residential homeowners were not in communication. Did I miss, what are the amenities for this development? You're going to build a townhome community that's right in between a residential neighborhood. What are the amenities for this townhome community?
Yeah, so the predominant amenity is the existing Reed Creek Park, which is across the street. So if I can, this probably doesn't have a laser. At the existing intersection of Greer Road and Rocky River Road, there is a pedestrian signalized crossing. So people would be able to utilize the 12-foot shared-use path, go to the signalized intersection, and then safely cross the street to utilize the existing park.
Okay, so just for me, it was mentioned earlier in the petition, I think we have a disconnect of what we see as an actual amenity. Staff and previous council put a lot of energy and discussion in UDO. If we talk about 10-minute neighborhoods and talk about neighborhood continuity and having walkability and accessibility, that's great if you have something to walk to. But as someone that's actually living, that may be purchasing into the townhome community, when I was asking what amenities there are, because I'm just going to make an assumption, it's probably going to be a market rate development, which I support, the idea of us having more homeownership versus rental, but also thinking about long-term. If, I don't know, crazy thought. I just think there will come a time that people actually want to have people over at their home or actually want to get out during springtime, summertime, or actually want to have a gathering space with their neighbors. If they, if you were to try to actually build a community or have some type of gathering space for the residents, when we're looking at development, looking at a comprehensive development that will be successful long-term. But I was just making sure I didn't miss it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor Protem. To Ms. Ramirez and Ms. Mingo, thank you so much. You do a lot of great work in the community. I was wondering if there was some type of connection where you could work together. We are very concerned when residents come up and they are against petitions. Your voice is heard, is what I'm saying. And so we just want to see if there's some type of connection that you can work with of the coalition to see if we can meet your needs at a meeting sometime on common ground where everybody could be okay. There may be a little bit more dissatisfaction in one area versus the other, but when residents come and they've been long-term residents, living in the area for 18 years, your voice matters, your concern matters. And so although we have a coalition of people that lead in that district and in that area, we also want you to know as residents that come in, it may be, come in in small numbers, that your voice is echoed and is heard as well. So sometimes there, you know, tough decisions and how you come about on common ground and how we can move forward. But I've worked with Mr. Nolan Grace before, and he does amazing work. And District Three is really growing at a rapid pace, just like District Four. But they are open to working and making sure they can come up with some type of resolution for you. So just know that your voice, your voice is being heard. And thank you for coming out. And always come out when you feel like you want to be heard or you want to lead on a different side of the spectrum where everything is not at equal balance. Always come out and speak to be heard. So that's what these meetings are for, and we take it very seriously. So I just want to say thank you so much for coming out. You're very welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Brown. You brought up a great point about the Coalition. The Coalition is a group of neighborhoods. You're not excluded from that Coalition. So make sure that you meet Ms. Mingo and get some information. It's a fairly new group, and it's a coalition of neighborhoods and residents in District Four, and it's open to all. So make sure you get that information so you all are engaged as well. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I had a motion to close public hearing in second. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mingo, for coming out as well. We'll move on to agenda item number 21, petition number 2024-088 by Childress Klein. The location is approximately 15.98 acres located along the north side of Rexford Road, south of Wickersham Road, and west of Colony in District Six, Mr. Bakari's district. The current zoning is O15CD. Proposed zoning is RACEX. Staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to transportation, site, and building design. And after staff's presentation, Ms. Grant will have three minutes. Thank you.
Yes. Petition 2024-088 is located along the north side of Rexford Road, south of Wickersham Road, and west of Colony Road. Site's approximately 15.9 acres. It's currently developed with two office buildings. Current zoning's O15CD, Office Conditional, which is a legacy zoning district. Proposed zoning is RACEX, Regional Activity Center Exception. The 2040 Policy Map recommends the Regional Activity Center place type for the site, and the RAC district is consistent with the RAC place type. The proposal calls for up to 675 multifamily residential units and 277,000 square feet of office, as well as up to 3,000 square feet of commercial uses, including restaurant. Petitioner is requesting five-year vested rights. Site is divided into four development areas, blocks 1, 2, 3, and 4. Blocks 1, 2, and 3 may allow for up to 675 multifamily dwelling units and up to 200,000 square feet of office, and a portion of the 3,000 square feet of commercial uses. Development limitations and conversion rights are outlined in the plan. Block 4 contains an existing 77,000 square foot office building, which will remain on the site. Up to 200,000 square feet of office may be converted into up to 300 multifamily residential dwellings at a rate of one dwelling unit per 667 square feet of office space. Office-to-residential conversions shall be limited to block 1. The requested EX provisions specify requirements for public benefits, and this includes sustainability and public amenity. It's outlined by Article 37 of the UDO. Petitioner will construct all new residential buildings to National Green Building standards or the equivalent, and they will create a publicly accessible open space that exceeds ordinance requirements. The following exceptions are requested. EX provision to Article 12.3. D. Block 4 is bound by three frontages. And these three frontages will be allowed to utilize the open space provision that may substitute for a percentage of the building width requirement along a frontage. Open space will be a minimum of 50 feet in depth along Public Street A. It will be 20 feet in depth along Rexford and Public Street B. And, but if there is a retaining wall placed here on Public Street B, it may be bruised to 10 feet if it's accompanied by enhanced landscaping. EX provision to Article 12.3. D. Minimum ground floor height of residential buildings may be reduced to 12 feet, may be reduced from 12 feet to 10 feet 8 inches. EX provision to 12.3. G. 2. Due to topography, 15% of the residential ground floor entrances within 10 feet of the back of sidewalk are normally required to be between 1 and 5 feet above or 1 and 3 feet below sidewalk grade. And 85% of them will comply with this standard, but 15% will not. EX provision to Article 19.6. A. 2. A., which is surface parking located within Block 4, will be located behind open spaces outlined in the first EX provision rather than behind an established setback, as Block 4 is an existing building site. And the EX provision to Article 19.7. C. 2. Block 1 will have 30% ground floor activation along secondary frontage, which is Street A. Block 3 will have 30% ground floor activation along both a primary and a secondary frontage. And the UDA requires 90% ground floor activation for a primary frontage and 60% for a secondary. Proposes the following site and building design standards. Maximum height of buildings are as follows. Buildings shall be limited to 65 feet within the first 200 feet of the northern property boundary, which is adjacent to N1 place type. Blocks 2 and 3 are limited to 100 feet in height, and Block 1 and 4 shall meet the standards of the ordinance. Petitioner will provide a half-acre public amenity on the site. That may include retail kiosks. The number of principal buildings will not exceed four, including the existing building within Block 4. The minimum 20-foot setback with an 8-foot sidewalk and 8-foot planting strip will be provided along the site's frontage of Rexford Road. Minimum 20-foot setback will be provided along all primary frontages, and a 16-foot setback along all secondary frontages internal to the street network. A 100-foot no-build zone, a potential green area, will be provided within 100 feet of the northern property boundary adjacent to N1. 25-foot Class B buffer yard will be provided along the site's eastern frontage adjacent to N2 place type. Staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to transportation and site and building design. The site is primarily surrounded by non-residential developments in the median area and relatively little housing. Proposed plan would increase the number and variety of housing types in the area. Most of the site is currently underutilized and developed as surface parking lots in the sites within a short walk, bus, or bike ride to dining, shopping, and groceries within the surrounding Regional Activity Center and is adjacent to the proposed route of the South Park Loop Trail. I'm happy to take any questions following Ms. Grant's presentation.
Thank you. Ms. Grant?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of council, members of the zoning committee. Bridgette Grant, I'm the land use consultant with Maureen Van Allen. I'm pleased to be here tonight with Fred Klein and Gareth Scott with Childress Klein. Max did a phenomenal job on his presentation, so I'm not going to duplicate his effort or repeat. Councilmember Bakari, we are happy to continue your role on positive efforts. We appreciate staff support on this rezoning, and we are pleased to come here tonight with letters of support from Span, the South Park area neighborhoods, as well as from South Park community partners. It's been an effort that's gotten us to this point with great collaboration with the community. I think those letters of support really speak to the significant and meaningful open space on our site, as well as a context-sensitive design to our adjacent neighbors. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any comment? Mr. Bakari?
I'd just say, you guys have done a lot of offline work to get those collaborative letters of support. I think now that we've got this out in the open in the public hearing, let's see if we hear any one-off other views and things like that from individual neighborhoods, and just make sure we address those one at a time so that we can hopefully come with a singular ask from all sides.
Thank you.
Move to close.
Second.
There's a motion to close public hearing in second. All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. We will move on to agenda item 22, petition number 2024-096 by 200E27LLC. The location is approximately 1.06 acres located along the southwest side of East 27th Street, the southeast of North Tryon, and north of North Brevard Street in District 1. My district, the current zoning is ML2. Proposed zoning is IMU. Staff recommends this petition. And after staff's presentation, Mr. Ferguson will have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. This site is one acre, located along 26th Street, just southeast of North Tryon there. This area, if you're familiar with, has undergone a lot of changes to convert these industrial buildings to mixed uses, similar to Camp North and that we have just to the west of the site. There are also a number of recently entitled multifamily projects in close proximity to this property. Site is currently zoned Manufacturing Logistics 2, and the petitioner is proposing innovation mixed use. And that is consistent with the policy map's recommendation, which calls for innovation mixed use at this site, as well as much of the surrounding area. This is a conventional petition with an associated site plan, and staff recommends approval. The existing ML2 zoning is not reflective of the area's shifting development trends, as well as our policy goals to facilitate mixed-use developments in previously industrial areas. And the requested IMU district would bring the site into consistency with the policy map. It would be well-served by a various means of transportation, and it is in walking distance to a couple of commercial areas, which helps to further support the IMU request and the IMU's district intent to blend commercial, residential, and mixed-use projects that prioritize adaptive reuse of structures. And I'll take any questions following petitioner's comments.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson?
Thank you. Mayor Protem, Council, Zoning Committee, Russell Ferguson here on behalf of the petitioner. It's 200E27LLC. Proud to stand here and represent this petition. It's a policy, a conventional rezoning that's in line with the 2040 policy plans. It's supported by planning staff. It's without any known opposition. It speaks right with its goal to adaptably reuse the buildings there. It speaks exactly to what IMU was made for, which is this transition from industrial into a mixed-use environment. And there's a lot going on in these blocks, and my petitioner looks forward to being a part of it. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. And I know you and I have spoken about this one. I just, anytime I see no one attended the public hearing, I get a little bit concerned about the public meeting. So can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, I think, so this area doesn't abut any residential, any existing residential that's within the area, the notice areas. And there's really kind of a handful of developers in the area, of several of whom are my clients. So I have spoken to people that have interest in the areas. They just didn't attend the meeting.
Okay. Okay, just want to make sure that as many people know about it as possible. Any additional comments? Motion to close public hearing. All right, all in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
We, thank you. We will move on to agenda item number 23, petition number 2024-098 by Helix Holding LLC. The location is approximately 0.375 acres located along the north side of the plaza, west of East Sugar Creek Road, and east of Sweetbrier Street in District 1. My district, the current zoning is ML2. Proposed zoning, N2B. Staff recommends approval of this petition. And after staff's presentation, Mr. Carmichael will have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Located just east of Notice Court, this CR 3.8 acre site is along a portion of the plaza that contains a real range of residential, commercial, institutional uses. There are adjacent areas with industrial zoning along the railway, but generally, this area is also direct to that split zoning across the four lots by rezoning the rear of the parcels that are ML2 to Neighborhood 2B to match the remainder of the site. Though the majority of these parcels are already zoned into B, they are all designated as Neighborhood 1 on the 2040 policy map, and that's as Neighborhood 1 on the 2040 policy map, and that's as a result of the existing single-family structures on the site. And this petition is inconsistent with that Neighborhood 1 recommendation, and if approved, would change the place type to Neighborhood 2. But again, it corrects that split zoning to bring the entire property under one designation. It is a conventional petition, so there is no site plan. Staff recommends approval. The existing ML2 development and zoning does not align with the residential uses envisioned for this site, and the rezoning may create a more preferred land development pattern, and it would be compatible with surrounding uses, as well as prescribed place types on our policy map. And I will take any questions following petitioner's comments.
Thank you. Mr. Carmichael?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of city council, the zoning committee. I'm John Carmichael here on behalf of the petitioner. With me tonight is James Lawrence, the petitioner. Ms. Kramer did a really good job of going through the details, but I do want to give you, show you an aerial that provides a little more context.
Excuse me?
Can't get this to, oops, sorry. So the site is about four tenths of an acre. It comprises the rear portions of four parcels of land that are near the intersection of the plaza and East Sugar Creek Road. This is an aerial that shows that the rezoning site is in purple here, and then these are the four parcels located on the north side of the plaza. It's, it's pretty faint, Mayor Pro Tem, but it's in purple. So the rest of the site that fronts the plaza is already zoned N2B, as is a parcel to the east that's also owned by the petitioner. There are some N2B zoning across the plaza from the rezoning site. There's some office and commercial general. And then the church located to the west of the site is zoned N2B, but also has some ML2 zoning as well. The request, as Holly stated, is to rezone the site to N2B, so that the entirety of these parcels will be located in one zoning district if the rezoning request is approved. We're happy to answer any questions. We appreciate the planning staff's favorable recommendation, and once again, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Carmichael. I, I could tell you, that's a very active part of District 1, and I've not received any negative or derogatory comments, so it's good that the community is aware of what's going on here.
Yes, and to that point, if I might, the, we did have a neighborhood meeting. One gentleman who lives across the plaza came, but then we went and met with the Noda community on November 5th and December 3rd. So we've gone to two of their meetings. So they're, they're aware of it.
Excellent, thank you. Any additional comment? Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. And Mr. Carmichael, you can hang on with us for agenda item number 24, petition number 2024-099 by Mecklenburg County. The location is approximately 24.75 acres, located on the eastern end of Cagle Ave, east of Sharon Amity Road, and west of WT Harris Boulevard in District 5, Ms. Molina's district. The current zoning is ML1 and ML2. Proposed zoning, IC2CD. Staff recommends approval of this petition, and after staff's presentation, Mr. Carmichael will again have three minutes. Thank you.
The site is just shy of 25 acres, and it's located west of Tantilla Circle, north of Kimmerly Glen Lane, east of Sharon Amity Road. Site is wooded and surrounded by a mix of multifamily residential, single-family residential, and commercial uses. Current zoning is ML1 and ML2. Proposed zoning is IC2, that's Institutional Campus 2, conditional. The 2040 policy map recommends Manufacturing and Logistics place type. This is a Tier 1 conditional petition with just a brief set of development standards that state it will allow all uses permitted in the IC2 zoning district while limiting building height to 80 feet. Staff recommends approval of this petition. Is inconsistent with the policy map recommendation for Manufacturing Logistics place type. The IC2 zoning district is intended to address the needs of large-scale institutional campuses that could provide governmental, educational, medical, and social services, as well as supportive uses. Petition would allow Mecklenburg County to provide public services on the site to serve eastern parts of Charlotte and Mecklenburg County. The development standards associated with the petition limit height to 80 feet to minimize visual impact to adjacent properties. I'll take any questions following petitioner's presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Carmichael?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, the zoning committee. I'm John Carmichael here on behalf of the petitioner, Mecklenburg County. Should have a presentation. But with me tonight are Stephen Swett of Mecklenburg County and Sean Thule with Land Design. As Joe indicated, the site contains just under 25 acres. It's located at the eastern terminus of Cagle Avenue, which is east of northern, North Sharon Amity Road, and south of the intersection of Milton Road and North Sharon Amity Road. The site is zoned ML1 and ML2. These are Manufacturing and Logistics zoning districts. You have ML2 zoning to the west and south of the site. I did have a slide that showed that, I promise. And N2B zoning to the north and east of the site. Petitioners requesting that the site be rezoned to the IC2CD zoning district to accommodate the development of a county resource center, which would offer governmental services to the public and contain county offices. The IC2 zoning district is a campus zoning district. This conditional rezoning request would limit the building height to 80 feet, which is consistent with the maximum height allowed in the current ML1 and ML2 zoning districts. The Community Resource Center would be county-operated, county-owned, and would provide governmental services to the public. It'd be a multi-story building, the large majority of which would be devoted to county offices. The lower levels of facility are intended to provide public-facing functions where the community can receive support through various governmental public assistance services. A purpose, what the county is doing is bringing these resource centers out to the community, and a purpose, the purpose of this is to bring the county to its customers. I did have, I'm not sure where it is, but I did have images of the recently completed L. B. Scarborough Community Resource Center located near the intersection of North Tryon and Eastway Drive. It was completed last summer. It's a, it's a beautiful facility and provides really meaningful services and opportunities to the citizens, and we appreciate your consideration of the request, and we're happy to answer any questions. Once again, Mr. Swett is here with the county, and he can answer questions as well.
Okay, thank you. Any comment? Ms. Molina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. So I'm, I'm encouraged by the petition simply because, you know, there are people that live in the district that do need these resources. But District 5 already has, we have a majority of the, the resource centers in District 5. If you think about the one that's, I think Billingsley, that's District 5. Ella Scarborough, that's one more. We have the, the Umbrella Center that's coming to Albemarle Road. And I mean, I'm, I'm looking that four members of the community came out. Did you know what their feedback was?
I do. There, I think two were from the apartment community to the north. There really, as I recall, two people really spoke. A woman who lives to the east in a single-family home, and then another person who I think was just involved in the community. The person who was involved in the community was very supportive. After the neighborhood minute, the neighborhood meeting, I sent the proposed uses to those that attended the meeting. The individual to the east was concerned a little bit about building height, how close it'd be to her property line, but because of the natural features of the site, the stream and the stream buffers, this building would be 150 to 200 feet from the eastern property line, and that eastern edge, the trees in the eastern edge of the site would also be preserved because of the need to protect the streams and the stream buffers. But that was her, seemed to be her concern. We also told her that the lighting would be cut-off lighting, so that would not extend past any property lines, but the trees will really be, I think, of benefit to that community.
No, that, I mean, like I said, that sounds good. I just, I want to share this while, while I'm on this, this subject. And I've heard from a diverse group of neighbors, right? And like every single district, there's a diversity of economics throughout, right? And a lot of the times when I say aggregate numbers, it really doesn't paint the full picture of who's there and what their earning potentials are. And what I see, especially for a district like District 5, where, you know, the average is skewed, and it's actually skewed toward the lower end of our earnings, right? It paints only one picture of the residents that we have in our beautiful and diverse district. We have high earners as well. We have, like most districts, we have high-income earners, and we have, you know, community members that, 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 that earn below what, well, well below what would be a living wage. And so although I'm, I'm, I'm excited about, like I said, anytime that we could bring resources to the community members, I am absolutely going to be in favor of it. So you won't see me have a pushback, but like I said, I want to take this moment to say out loud that we have so many opportunities to do more across this district, right? It, it shouldn't be that East Charlotte is the place where everyone comes just when they need resources. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Or that the, you know, the understanding is, if I need something based on, you know, having a low income, that, oh, I need to go to East Charlotte, or, oh, I need to go to West Charlotte. You know what I'm saying? And, and right now, that's the balance of, of what we get largely, and, and why we get those things, because again, we paint just one picture largely of the demographics of human beings that are in those districts. I've had extensive conversation with the now chair, who is my counterpart, Commissioner Mark Jarrell, about this very exact same thing, about how do we properly, he and I working together, paint a proper diverse picture of our district that we represent, right? Taking into consideration that our far east residents, they earn above what the, you know, county minimum is, but we don't really have what you would say amenities out there for those humans, and we're not really targeting that yet. So, you know, in, in a, in a perfect world, I'd like a both and, right? Again, this is an opportunity for the community members that I represent, who need those resources, and, and actually, resources for community members that are throughout our city. But as we look at East Charlotte, I, in a perfect world, like I said, taking this moment to say it out loud, the diversity of our district, I want to be exclamated, because it deserves to be exclamated. There are human beings that are doing very well in the district that I represent, and so we have those humans that need services as well. So I just wanted to put that out there. Again, I, you know, love to talk to you more about this online.
Happy to.
And I think Commissioner Jarrell would be a great addition to this conversation, really just to get his perspective. So I'm going to do that on a one-off anyway.
Okay.
But I feel like, you know, and he probably is already aware of this, knowing that it's going to come before the council, but I'd love for he and I to huddle and, and gain his, you know, enriched perspective on how he envisions our area as well.
We'd love the opportunity to meet with you and the commissioner. There's Steve. Mr. Swett and I would love the opportunity to do that.
Okay, I would, I would like that.
I'll, I'll shoot it, I'll shoot you an email.
All right, thank you so much.
And there's the presentation, but I don't, I won't go through it.
All right. Any additional comment?
Go to close.
Second.
There's a motion to close public hearing. In second, all in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That's unanimous, and we will move on to agenda item number 26, petition number 2024-105 by Angelo Tillman. The location is approximately 1.99 acres, located along the north side of Tom Hunter Road, west of Hidden Forest Drive, and south of I-85 in District 1, my district. The current zoning is N1B. Proposed zoning, N1FCD. Staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to transportation, site and building design, in addition to requested technical revisions. After site, after staff's presentation, Mr. Angelo Tillman will have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. This two-acre site is located in the Hidden Valley neighborhood, where we see single-family as well as multifamily uses, situated between commercial areas that can be found along West Sugar Creek Road and North Tryon. Site is currently zoned Neighborhood 1B, and the request is for Neighborhood 1F conditional, which is consistent with the policy map's recommendation for Neighborhood 1 at this site. The proposal itself is for a multi-dwelling development, which would allow for two quadruplex buildings, a total of eight attached units, and the petitioner committed to a maximum building height of 40 feet, which is less than what the ordinance allows for, for that district. A classy landscape yard would be provided along the eastern boundary, where the site abuts single-family zoning and uses. And the majority of the site would be free of impervious surfaces, as the development is primarily limited to that lower third of the parcel that fronts Tom Hunter, and the middle and upper portions of the site are dedicated for open space, tree safe area, and stormwater management areas. Units fronting Tom Hunter would be rear-loaded via a private alley, and that same alley will service the other quadruplex with front-loaded garages. Staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues and technical revisions, most of which are really quite minor. The proposal for two quadruplex buildings on a two-acre property is compatible with the site's single-family and multifamily surroundings, and the petitioner committed to additional conditions regarding preferred architectural standards, a lower maximum height, and the modest density, all of which help blend single-family home characteristics into a residential product type that is a little bit denser than what we see just east of this site. This petition creates a transition between the single-family detached homes along the eastern boundary and the multifamily developments that we see to the north and west of this rezoning area. I'll take questions following the petitioner's comments.
Thank you.
We propose to build eight townhouses on that, on that lot, keeping with affordable housing. We plan on keeping all of the townhouses below $300,000, and we've already talked to Bank of America about their community, their home, homeownership commitment, because the biggest obstacle to homeownership is usually the down payment, which is 10%, and the closing costs. And Bank of America does have a program that allows zero down payment, allows, will help with closing costs. In the Hidden Valley community right now, it's probably more rental properties in the area than homes, and so we feel like that we will help the community, because homeownership, it helps, it helps, it helps the community as far as like people taking pride, taking a part in the community events, and then also homeownership helps children coming from those homes as far as the opportunity for higher education. And so we hope that you let us build these townhouses.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman, and I, I'm interested in your interaction with the Hidden Valley community at all. Have you been to any of their community meetings or been in touch with Ms. Marjorie Parker?
Actually, I, I grew up in the Hidden Valley community, went to school Myers Park and Carver Jr. High School. And right now, I look on, they have the Hidden Valley Gentlemen, Older Gentlemen's Committee. They take part in the community with Hidden Valley Elementary, reading to the children, mentoring to the children, also having cookouts and other events. And so I know that as far as like with the homeownership, when you have first, second, and third generation people living in the community, they help uplift the community.
Absolutely, and yes, and the Hidden Valley OGs do a lot of really good work in the community. Have you had any conversation with Ms. Marjorie Parker at all, the chair of?
I have not, because we had the meeting, nobody showed up.
Okay, okay. I, I, I'm going to encourage you to do so, and I, I will encourage her to reach out to you as well, because they're very engaged around the development in the community. Sounds like you would be right, what you're planning will be right in line with what they're looking for, but I would just still would like for her to have an opportunity to have a conversation with you.
Would definitely reach out to her.
Absolutely. Okay, Ms. Brown, and then Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think what you're doing is amazing, but also, I joined Hidden Valley community coalition because they're going to keep the history over there.
Yes, ma'am.
And if you speak with her, you'll get some support. They are very, very strong in their numbers, so I can give you your number, because I'm going to be talking to her.
Okay.
If you don't mind, if the number's correct on the paper.
I have.
I'll make sure I pass the baton, because she will be interested in your concern. I went to Myers Park as well.
Okay.
And PHS.
Okay.
My stains.
Good stains.
2400 Colony Road.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. All right, Mr. Mitchell.
Angelo.
Yes, what's up?
Did we go to Rancin' together?
We went to school together.
Aw, man! He's like, that's my classmate! He said that.
Go to close.
Second.
All right, there's a motion to close public hearing. In second, all in favor, raise hands. Any opposed?
Good see.
That is unanimous. We'll move on to, you know, we'll, we'll move on to petition item number 27, petition number 2024-107 by Neil Kendrick Hospitality LLC. The location is approximately 3.19 acres, located at the southwest intersection of West Arrowood. Road and Microsoft Way and east of Hanson Road in District Three, Ms. Brown's district. Current zoning is BDCD and N-L1. Proposed zoning is OG. Staff recommends approval of this petition, and after staff's presentation, Ms. Grant will join us again, and she'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. This site is approximately 3.19 acres located on the south side of Arrowood Road, west of Microsoft Way. Site is currently undeveloped and is surrounded primarily by office buildings, also some, uh, commercial and institutional uses. The current zoning, it is a split-zone site with BDCD along the Arrowood Road frontage and ML1 to the rear of the site. Proposed zoning is OG, Office General Conventional. The 2040 policy map recommends campus place type. Staff recommends approval of this petition. It is consistent with the place type recommendation of campus. Site's location along and near major roads, including West Arrowood Road and South Tryon Street, supports uses that enhance connectivity and align with the surrounding employment centers. Abutting in predominantly, abutting uses are predominantly commercial and office, reinforcing the designation as a campus place type. Transitioning the site from BDCD and ML1 to OG aligns with the property, aligns the property with campus place type, helping to bring a split-zone property into consistency with the area's planning goals. I will take any questions after the petitioner's presentation.
Mm-hmm. All right. Ms. Grant.
Good evening, Mayor Proton, members of council. Bridget Grant, Land use consultant with Moore and Van Allen. I'm happy to be here tonight on behalf of Sam Patel on this conditional rezoning. And I would like to say also, since I couldn't talk Mr. McVane to sticking around until I retire, there are two other members of Moore and Van Allen's team, Lisa Thompson and John Floyd, that you'll be seeing a lot of in the years to come. Um, thank you again for your time tonight. As Joe mentioned, this is a conventional rezoning, so there's no site plan associated with it. Councilmember Brown, you may remember, you joined the community meeting. You were the only one there with me because no one had signed up for it. So thank you for that. We're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, great. Any discussion? Ms. Grant.
I was just hearing that. Thank you so much, Madam, uh, Mayor. Yeah, I showed up for the meeting, and nobody there but me. And so it's always concerning, but we talk about how we can expand and make sure that people understand that their voice, their input is very important. And I know that you and I have built a relationship over the past year, and you listen, and you'll go back to the table, the drawing board, or whatever you need to do. So, um, I look forward to seeing, you know, what we can do. And I'll reach out to some community members in the area. Send me away if they come. They do? If they don't, what can we do? You know, we can put our best foot forward each and every time. That's all that we can do. And so I do appreciate you having a meeting, although I was the only one there.
Thank you.
But again, I was there, and we will try to extend the invitation to a few community leaders that I know in the area as we move forward. But that's all I have.
All right. Any additional comment? Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Motion to close public hearing and second, all in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous, and we will move on to agenda item number 28, petition number 2024-108 by Olympia and Wright Homes. The location is approximately three acres located along the south side of Mount Holly Huntersville Road, on the west and east side of Polly Drive and north of Mount Holly Road in District Two, Mr. Graham's district. The current zoning is N-1A. Proposed zoning is N-2BCD. Staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to transportation, environment, and site and building design. After staff's presentation, Mr. Brown will have three minutes. Thank you.
Uh, petition 2024-108 is located along the south side of Mount Holly Huntersville Road, west and east side of Polly Drive, and north of Mount Holly Road. Site's approximately three acres in size and currently undeveloped. Current zoning is N-1A, Neighborhood One. Proposed zoning is N-2BCD, Neighborhood Two. 2040 policy map recommends the Neighborhood One place type for this site. The N-2B district is inconsistent with the N-1 place type. Approval of this petition would revise the 2040 policy map recommendation to the N-2 place type. Proposal calls for the development of up to 40 multifamily dwellings, uh, attached dwellings, that is, townhomes. Uh, multifamily stacked units are prohibited. The following streetscape improvements are proposed. Construct 12, construct a 12-foot multi-use path and eight-foot planting strip along Mount Holly Huntersville Road, an eight-foot sidewalk and eight-foot planting strip, strip on Polly Drive. A 10-foot Class C landscape yard will be provided along the side and rear of the property lines adjacent to the N-1 parcels. The trees, trees shall be planted at a minimum of one, at a minimum spacing of 20 feet and a maximum spacing of 40 feet along, um, internal alleyways. Sidewalks will be provided from all residential entrances to the public street. Visitor parking will be provided as generally depicted on the site plan. Following architectural requirements provided, buildings are limited to no more than six attached units. Minimums, um, slope of pitch roots will be 512. Buildings fronting Mount Holly Huntersville Road will be oriented towards the street and rear-loaded with alley-fed garages. Corner and in units adjacent to, adjacent to Polly Drive will have blank wall limitations. Usable porches and stoops, minimum of five feet in depth will be provided. Following transportation improvements are proposed. Vehicular access to the site is via private alleys accessed from Polly Drive. 50 feet of right-of-way shall be dedicated along the center line of Mount Holly Huntersville Road. Petitioner intends the abandonment of King's Drive, which is the southwest portion of the site here. Um, an ADA compliant bus waiting pad will be constructed along the site's frontage with Mount Holly Huntersville Road. Staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to transportation, environment, and site and building design. As the site is adjacent to N-2 development, the comprehensive plans Equitable Growth Framework identifies the site is within access to housing gap, and the site is within a half mile of a commercial center containing a range of daily needs and served directly by transit. Happy to take any questions following Mr. Brown's presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Yes, thank you. That was a pretty, um, Colin Brown on behalf of Olympian Wright petitioner. That was a pretty thorough, uh, presentation by Max. I'll just hit the high points if our slides come up here. Um, again, as Max pointed out, this is an infill development on Mount Holly Huntersville Road. Uh, it is in good proximity to a commercial center, uh, kind of just to the west of the site that includes grocery. Uh, this is, you know, in an area that's a little bit of, kind of, in, in a redevelopment phase. If you'll notice, just to the west of us, if you were to drive out there today, this site would be cleared. It's got a lot of red dirt. So townhomes are coming here. We've got townhomes across the street, and the question is what happens with these lots? And so, uh, the proposal is for an infill development like this. We are proposing the N-2 district, but this is not multifamily. It's not apartments. Uh, these would be kind of the duplexes, triplex, uh, townhome style development. Um, the, the positive, one of the real positives and amenities coming in would be, uh, the multi-use path that, uh, Max mentioned, because there is great commercial down here. It's just, uh, there's no existing, the existing infrastructure is not there. Um, so not only a sidewalk, but a mixed-use path coming in that area to provide some greater connectivity down the street. Um, happy to have staff support on this and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Mayfield.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, I'm gonna ask you the same question that I asked, uh, previous petitioner. As far as did I miss the amenities for this townhome community?
You did not. Uh, this is an infill site. This, where it, kind of the, I guess, if my client would say, he said, would say the amenities, the location, and sawing the sidewalks would take us down the street. But I did hear your comments on, you know, it sounded like last time your point was, hey, let's just have some open area for people to gather. Um, so with those comments in mind, I'll be happy to talk with the team and see if we can find some areas in there to provide something like that on-site. And it, it didn't sound like you're saying, hey, you gotta have a swimming pool and a clubhouse, but maybe pavilion to cookout so people can get together.
Because we have a development further up that's multifamily where they built the pool, and I have yet to ever see anybody use.
Okay.
Use it when I drive by. But just thinking about that gathering space as if there's an opportunity.
I, I will talk with them about that.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Graham?
And, and you guys are working through some of the logistics of making sure that you're on the same page?
Wouldn't you say you guys? Oh, staff?
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, and we're working on abandonment. There is, so there are a couple, uh, moving parts. We did have attendees at our community meeting. I do owe the lady, uh, across the street who lives here, she asked for, hey, what, what type of, um, and this development team's putting together some ideas to share with her on the product type. So we'll get that to her and, uh, follow up with Ms. Uh, Mayfield on the open space, and we'll work to get the staff issues resolved.
All right. Just keep me in the loop.
Okay.
Move close public hearing.
Second. All right. All in favor of closing public hearing, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous. We will move on to agenda item number 30, petition number 2024-114 by Dream Key Partners. The location is approximately 3.80 acres located west of Statesville Road, north of Oak Wood Drive, and south of Cochran Drive in District Two, Mr. Graham's district. Current zoning is UR2CD. Proposed zoning is N-2BCD. Staff recommends the approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to transportation, site and building design, in addition to a requested technical revision. After staff's presentation, Mr. McVane will join us for three minutes. Thank you.
This 3.8 acre site is located, uh, just west of Statesville Road among several developing multifamily townhome projects, as well as an established single-family area along the southern property boundary. Site is currently zoned urban residential to conditional as a result of petition 2018-015. And that was for a larger area, so all that area you see in orange was part of that petition. And although the other phases for this project have begun, the site within 2024-114 has remained undeveloped. The request is to rezone this site from that existing urban residential conditional plan to Neighborhood 2B conditional. It would allow for the same residential uses entitled in 2018-015, but this petition would differ slightly on proposed site and building design. This request is inconsistent with a 2040 policy map, which does call for campus at this area. Though I will just call out, this is being proposed for a change in the revised policy map. We believe it was just an error, uh, and this was intended for Neighborhood Two. So the revised policy map will have this entirety of that UR2 petition site, 65 acres, show up as Neighborhood Two if approved. The proposal itself allows for up to 53 multifamily attached units, and the number of principal structures may not exceed 10. All of these units would be rear-loaded via a private alley. Site would be accessed from Bull Line Drive and an extension of Grasset Avenue. And petitioner commits to extend Grasset Avenue and DB Street if not constructed by others. 10-foot Class C landscape yard, as well as a six-foot fence, would be provided along the southern boundary where the site abuts single-family zoning. And a minimum of 4,000 square feet of amenitized open space will be provided predominantly in those two open space areas identified. And the petitioner commits to preferred architectural standards. Staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues and technical revision. This petition proposes development that is consistent with the already entitled multifamily attached uses on this property and its surrounding area. And it's mindful of the single-family uses along the southern boundary by providing a landscape yard and the fence that goes beyond ordinance requirements, and that will help buffer the proposed development to those residents. Residents at this site and the neighboring developments would have increased access to Statesville Road via an extension of DB Street. And this road and the completed pedestrian infrastructure will significantly improve connection to the existing bus stop that's along Statesville Road. Although the petition is inconsistent with the campus place type, there are no campus uses existing on the site and the surrounding parcels. And N-2 generally is a more fitting place type, and the development fits broader, fits better into the broader area. I'll take questions following petitioner's comments.
Thank you. Mr. McVane?
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Members of council, members of zoning committee, Keith McVane with Moore and Van Allen, assisting Dream Key Partners. I want to thank Holly for her presentation and her support. We will be working with the staff, uh, to address the remaining issues. Uh, we did send a presentation in. Uh, again, the request is for 53 townhomes for sale. Uh, we, uh, this site was originally part of the Parkview Neighbors, this is not my presentation, Park, part of the Parkview Neighborhood, uh, which was zoned back in 2018. Uh, this portion of the site has remained undeveloped. There is a brownfields agreement that is in place for this portion of, of, of Parkview that restricts the use of this portion of the site to single-family homes. So that's the reason that, for the change, what was originally planned, uh, was, uh, single-family homes, but due to the brownfields agreement, it only allows townhomes to be built on the site. Uh, we did have a good community meeting. We had several neighbors from along Oak, or the, along the road to the, I think it's Oak Drive along the south, as well as some of the new neighbors of the Parkview Neighborhood, attended the community. They asked questions about open space and overflow parking and buffering and screening. Uh, the petitioner to address those concerns did add a fence to the buffer at the rear of the site, uh, along the rear of the site here was part, as part of the buffer, and then enhanced several open space areas here to create an amenity for the new residents. Uh, to address some of the staff concerns, we will also be adding some additional open space areas in a couple of larger area, larger areas between buildings. Uh, we'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any comment? Ms. Mayfield, Mr. Driggs, and Mr. Graham?
Again, congratulations.
Thank you very, and thank you very much.
I'm surprised you made it through tonight for this final one. But also, thank you for hearing the question that I'm asking.
Yes, ma'am.
For long-term amenity and green space. It is funny, though, because the shape of the site is that of a submarine.
It does, does look like.
When she dropped everything in. So I just thought that was interesting. But I appreciate developers coming with townhomes and with other offerings that are really diversifying us outside of multifamily to really give our opportunity, because we're going to see some challenges coming ahead for the next few years. So I appreciate having some diversity in what is being brought before us. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Driggs?
Mr. McVane, for 11 years, uh, I've heard you try to justify outlandish proposals. Um, and I've enjoyed every minute.
Thank you.
Uh, I think perhaps our, our finest hour was, um, on Providence Road with the Goldman, I believe it was, if you recall. That was quite an experience. So, uh, in honor of this occasion, I would love to move that we just go right ahead and approve this, but I think the city attorney won't let me.
[laughing]
Seriously, I wish you all the best.
Thank you, sir.
Really appreciate it, working with you, and, uh, hope things go well for you in the future. Thank you, Keith.
Appreciate that. Same here. It's been a, a pleasure and an honor, really, to work with everybody through all these years. And you're gonna get me choked up here, but, uh, I do look forward to retirement, but I will miss my Monday nights with, uh, with the council, and maybe I'll tune in online and see what's going on.
Don't do that.
Thank you very much.
No, you won't.
Maybe.
Just have a glass of wine.
Been a pleasure. Thank you.
Well, I, I think I get the last word. Uh, so, so he's not done yet, so I will see you tomorrow morning.
Yes, sir, you will.
Working it to the end, huh?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Mitchell?
I just gotta add some, uh, kudos. We're gonna miss you, sir. And I feel like I'm the reason why you're missing something to hear from the top.
Maybe.
Because I used to worry you and call you late at night, but thank you, sir, for your contribution. You have put Shaw in a better place because of your leadership.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you very much. Thank you, James.
I need to say something to him, huh?
You really don't have to.
Yeah.
Just for, yes.
Yeah. No, I, actually, you know what, actually, in the time that I've been here, uh, I've, I've definitely known you to be a fair broker.
Thank you.
Um, you know, brokering the, the interests of the community and your particular clients, and, and that's something that, that is, is cherished from our end of the, on the spectrum. So thank you for your service.
Ma'am.
I hope you don't spend your Monday nights looking at our meetings, although it's hard to pull away, right?
It is.
Like, it's gonna be one of those things, but enjoy yourself.
Thank you.
And many blessings to you and your family.
Thank you very much.
You want to hear from me, don't you?
Absolutely.
[laughing] Mr. McVane, the relationship that we've developed over the past year has been very professional and very astounding. So thank you so much for your hard work and your dedication and your commitment and your desire to make things work. And so it's been an absolute pleasure to work with you and to, to know you the shortest amount of time, but hey.
Thank you.
It's been amazing. Thank you.
Same here, same. Thank you, everybody. Thanks.
Of course, Mr. McVane, thank you for everything that you've done. I, I'm reminiscing on a tough rezoning we had just a short while ago.
Yes, ma'am.
And, uh, we had lots of meetings, lots of back and forth, and actually got it to a place where the community was better off. And I appreciate you having that level of leadership throughout all of the petitions that you work on.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think me and James seen them retire twice, right?
Yeah.
Exactly.
We have. Once from the city and once from.
For sure.
Correct.
Move close public hearing.
All right.
Second.
There's a motion to close public hearing and second, all in favor, raise hands.
Drop your hands, everybody.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we will move on to our final, um, agenda item this evening.
For the year.
For the entire year. For the entire year.
Say that again. Doesn't that sound nice?
That's right.
For the year.
Agenda item number 31, petition number 2024-115 by The View at Honeywood AMLC. The location is approximately 6.95 acres, located southeast of Montana Drive, northeast of Tennessee Ave., and west of Southwest Boulevard in District 2, Mr. Graham's district. The current zoning is R22MFCD. Proposed zoning is R22MFCDSPA. The staff recommends approval of this petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to transportation, the environment, and site and building design. After staff's presentation, Mr. Matt Langston will have three minutes. Thank you.
All right. Petition 2024-115 is located on the south, southeast of Montana Drive, northeast of Tennessee Avenue, and south, and west of Southwest Boulevard. Site's approximately 6.95 acres, is currently undeveloped. Site's currently zoned R22MFCD, multifamily conditional, legacy district. Proposed zoning is R22MFCDSPA, which is a multifamily district site plan amendment. 2040 policy map recommends the Neighborhood 2 place type. The R22MFCDSPA district is consistent with the N, 2 place type. A little background on the site plan amendment, in 2021, the site was rezoned from R5 single-family to the R22MFCD district to allow for the development of up to 150 multi-dwelling units, or multifamily units, excuse me, in not more than seven buildings. Site plan amendment calls for a reduction in the number of principal buildings from a maximum of seven to just three buildings. The propose, proposes to increase the maximum height of the principal buildings from 40 feet, as measured by the zoning ordinance, to 65 feet. Proposes the inclusion of an accessory structure for onsite amenities, and the overall plan would not increase the number of dwelling units permitted under the previously approved conditional plan. Staff recommends approval of the petition upon resolution of outstanding issues related to site, building design, transportation, and the environment. As the site aligns with the policy map recommendation for Neighborhood 2, the site plan amendment would not increase the number of dwelling units, and the site is served by transit. Happy to take any questions following Mr. Langston's presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Langston.
Mayor Pro Tem, Members of Council, thanks for listening to us tonight. Hopefully, I'll try to keep it really quick. Matt Langston with Landworks Design Group, Chris Ogunrendy with Urban Trends Real Estate is here as well.
He is.
Petitioner. And, like Max said, this project was submitted as a petition back in 2021, y'all approved it in 2022. We got hired to do the site construction plans, and as we got deeper into the site design and site permitting, it, it was an affordable housing project, and as we got deeper into the site design, it got very expensive with walls and underground storm detention. And so the goal of the consolidation of the site is to help it work a little bit more efficiently. If you can see, this was the 2021 plan. Buildings are all the way around, there are site walls on the low side and underground detention. The new plan would allow that to be constructed more affordably, and the site's got about 35 feet of grade change across it, and so we're using that to help sort of conceal the additional height that we're asking for. We're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any comment?
Just question, have you, our guy, sat at your neighborhood meeting, and any response based on the change of the plan?
We, we had our neighborhood meeting. We had one attendee who had gotten a new phone and was struggling, so I FaceTimed him and held him up to my computer so he could see the screens and stuff. And we had probably two other absentee property owners from out of state who reached out when they got the letter, and we followed up with them separately, but we didn't have any comments that affected the site plan.
Okay.
All right. Any additional comment?
Second for the year.
All right. Motion to close public hearing, all in favor, raise hands. Any opposed? That is unanimous, and we have a motion to adjourn, and a second. Before we adjourn, I just want to say happy holidays and merry Christmas to everyone in the community. I want to thank the zoning committee. They worked tirelessly throughout the year to make sure that we are able to conduct these meetings, a lot of time and investment, so have a wonderful holiday season, and we will see you again in 2025. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.[1692.87]